Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Mount Vernon City School District October 25th School Board Meeting. Please stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please. Trustee Kelly.
Here.
Trustee Engenga.
Here.
Trustee Adesobi.
Here.
Trustee Gail.
Here.
Trustee Lency.
Here.
Trustee Kerwin.
Here.
Trustee Rad.
Trustee White.
President Saunders.
Here.
On behalf of our forum. Thank you. So we'll go right into communications from the public? There is no legal requirement to recognize a public comment at meetings of the Board of Education. However, the Board recognizes the critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children, and accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak at each regularly scheduled board meeting, subject to the terms of the board policy. A speaker must register in advance by no later than 4:00 PM the day of the meeting by contacting the district clerk in person at 165 North Columbus Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York, by phone at 914-665-5235, or by email. The Board welcomes all respectful comments, whether praise or criticism. However, identifying and criticizing a specific student, parent, teacher, administrator, or other Mount Vernon education official or employee is strictly prohibited. Any such complaint must be presented and addressed through proper administrative channels. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to speak; up to one additional minute may be used for the speaker to summarize and conclude their remarks. If appropriate, board trustees and/or the superintendent or other staff members at the direction of the superintendent may immediately respond to a speaker's remarks. Our first speaker tonight is Cynthia Quinshaw.
Good evening.
Okay. The first thing I want to say is that I believe you are doing a great job so far. It was good to hear about all the mechanics coming back. It was good that our memorial field is open up. The superintendent has joined all of the PTAs. We have a meeting with her, and she listened to our concerns, and she's just concerned about what's going on in our school system. So I just want to thank you guys. I think you're doing an excellent job. What I would like to discuss, though, is the closing of the after-school programs, such as gyms and safe haven. And my question is, will the board be liable if anything happened to our students while walking to Benjamin Turner? The parents cannot bring them to Benjamin Turner due to a working schedule. We should accommodate the parents and our children at their neighborhood schools. If there's a full enrollment at Benjamin School, my question is, is there a full enrollment at Benjamin Turner? I believe we would lose the majority of our students if this plan goes forward. These programs should not be taken away from Parker, Grimes, or Holmes. I met two parents at one of the meetings at the Dole Center, and they said they was taking their kids out of our public schools because of the after-school activity and that what they're learning at Amali was just as good as the public school. And you know that was a big discussion between me and these two parents. But another question I have, do we do exit interviews when parents take their children out of our public schools? And I'm hoping that you would leave the gyms, safe haven, at the neighborhood schools where our kids go. And also, we used to have the basketball team at Parker, too, in the after-school. But I don't think we have that anymore. But anyway, you're doing a good job. Keep up the good work. Let's work together. Let's move Mount Vernon. Even city halls, they have communities that they are setting up, and they're asking the community to come in and speak at these communities. So let's just work together. Let's continue to work together. Let's make Mount Vernon the great place to live, school, and to love each other. That's all. I'm quick. Okay?
Brenda Miles.
Okay. My granddaughter used to go to Parker, but she no longer goes there. And she goes to school with her father up in the White Plains School District, because that's where he works. But I must say, on that note, when she went and she was tested, she was tested above her grade average when she went there. So Mount Vernon is doing something good as far as the education is concerned, you know? So like I said, I'm not here to bow, beat, or cash you down or throw you under the bus. However, we do have a beautiful state-of-the-art aquatic system over at Mount Vernon High School. And I'm going by what I heard, not by what I know. But what I heard is, we do not have lifeguards that are hired to work on the school year for our children. And I heard that other facilities, other school systems are allowed to use our facilities for a fee. And if that's true, can the fee amount to the amount that would hire at least two lifeguards for our children so they wouldn't have to be worried about coming out of the school budget? Let that fee be assessed to the amount that it would cost to hire lifeguards for our children. I think it's a slap in the face for the city of Mount Vernon and Mount Vernon High School to have a beautiful facility like that, and our children and our community not be allowed to use it because we do not have a lifeguard hired on staff. Also, the county parks department, this year hired a whole bunch of lifeguards throughout their parks. I was wondering if you could identify some of the lifeguards that they use to maybe hire them, or check out the New York State Lifeguard Registry by which to hire some lifeguards. But I still think, if we're not allowed to use it, nobody should be allowed to use it. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Miles.
Ms. Miles, I have good news for you.
Okay, tell it, tell it.
We will be hiring, and have hired some guards already, lifeguards. And we are going to have programs in the afternoon. We just have to work out the busing issues from school to school to go to the high school so that they can have our kids learning how to swim. So that's going to be one of the activities that we are going to have in the community. And I want to say to Ms. Quinshaw, gym is coming back.
Thank you.
We have worked, it's not our program, it's the Youth Bureau program. And there were some funding that they had to work out. So those programs are coming back as of next week.
Okay, thank you.
So we worked that out. I just want to let you know that. All right, bye-bye.
One more thing about this stuff. If you want more funding to come in, especially for that aquatic system, why don't you look and see if the state was using it as a trading facility for other lifeguards? They are known that they look for aquatic systems just like that, that state-of-the-art. And that way, it can bring money and revenue in, and then that way, we won't ever have to worry about affording to pay for lifeguards. It'll pay for itself. All right, thank you.
Our next speaker, Jeff Monroe.
Good evening, community. I'd like to address, really, it's a secondary issue to something that I feel is very important. The secondary issue is this allocation of this eight-and-a-half million dollars to Wellcore. Now, when and if we ever get a full explanation for that, I welcome it. This is actually a pretty difficult position for me to take in terms of accountability because I've always been supportive of our current superintendent, and I actually am supportive of some of the things I've heard so far, at least in theory, of what we want to do with this school district. And that falls into many of the, what I consider, primary objectives we should be setting for our children and service to our children and our families. My primary issue is this issue of education and the social well-being of our children. Now, Wellcore apparently was taking money to service some of these social and mental health issues that lay within our children's concerns. If that's not correct, I'd love a clarification. Of course, I need the clarification because there's been zero information on this company and the program that it actually serves or produces. I think one issue for me that could clear up some of this so-called controversy, which I think should not be a controversy, I want to speak briefly to a really unfortunate kind of anti-intellectualism in this community that suppresses critical thinking. I think the fact that we make accountable our trustees, our staff, our mayors, whoever, there's an ongoing kind of pervasive, almost demonization of anyone who questions authority. That's a problem in what claims to be a democratic America. So I'm going to drop that right there for hopefully letting everyone sink in on that. Moving forward, I want to see what this program actually delivers. Was this program delivering something educationally, academically, intellectually, socially, or even in terms of mental health, useful to our children and families? If it was, can we just see some data? Can we see a program? Can we see a structure? One of these wonderful PowerPoints that our vendors left to bring to the community? I'd love to see, not just a presentation, I'd like to see the actual data produced from whatever, or the curriculum, or whatever was produced from the program. The money is one problem. Whatever the money is, wherever they are, and whatever it took to get this service rendered, is secondary for me to whether the service was rendered. And that should be easy enough to produce, especially for professional educators. And I say that because I've been beating the drum for going on a decade now for African-centered curriculum. This is not a subjective demand. It's not because I'm an African that I'm pushing some kind of feel-good education. Even the racist anthropologists agree that most human civilization, well, most data, most archaeological evidence for human civilization comes from Africa. So it seems as if you want to teach children all the origins and proper standards of science, arts, mathematics, whatever we consider real in the world today, you should start with the beginning. Whatever comes from that, whether it's Asian, European, or otherwise, comes from that trip from the beginning. So why would we not do that as a basic structure academically? Someone smarter than me academically can always explain that. But I'd like to see that reflected in this explanation of where Wellcore was putting that service and that money. Having said that, Superintendent Dr. Abena Conroy, I'd like to see more success. I'd like to see more progress. Trustees, I'd like to see more accountability for all of our executives. I'd like to see fostering a culture of accountability, and not just transparency, but actual critical thinking and questioning, open questioning, regardless of how people feel about it, because it's honest. It's just good leadership, and it's what your children need to see. Having said that, thank you very much. Oh, and please, trustees, stop aggregating your responsibilities. Please appoint, proper appointees to the Cable Television Advisory Committee. The last superintendent and trustees aggregated their responsibilities. Let Dr. Hamilton do it, and that was a disaster. Please just do that properly. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Renew Adams.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rayanu Adam. I go to Mount Vernon Steam Academy, and I'm a senior there. I'm here to talk about the Office of Student Improvement, also known as Dr. B.C.'s Office, and its grant programs. Basically, where does the money go? So I'm part of two programs, My Brothers Keeper and The Great Potential Program with Purchase College. My Brothers Keeper is founded by Barack Obama when he was in office. So they just asked me to give my experiences and how these have impacted me and helped me, now that I'm graduating. So I guess with Great Potential, my mother works, so she cannot take me to colleges. But Great Potential took me to SUNY Buffalo, SUNY Fredonia, and gave me a wide range of colleges to look at and think about, and it has influenced my college list now that I'm applying now. And they do other stuff, like help people with essays, and it's just a lot that I am very grateful to have at this point in my life. And My Brothers Keeper is the same way. My Brothers Keeper is for African-American teenage males to get mentorship. And the networking and connections that have been brought to me as part of this program have been unbelievable. Like now, I'm talking to students going to Ivy League colleges. Now, I'm applying to Ivy League colleges when, as like a middle schooler, this didn't even seem like something that could be part of my future. So thank you, Dr. B.C., thank you to Office of Student Improvement, and that's my piece. Thank you.
I'm here to present a few things, and hopefully I could cover everything. First, I was back here on June 21st over the summer regarding Hamilton Elementary, and I was hoping I would not have to be back here, but here I am. It's regarding the Hamilton Playground and the fencing. Now, I had a conversation earlier this afternoon with some update, which actually changes what I'm going to present. However, I still want to touch on, the fencing started, but the concern I have is that, what's the plan? Thinking from a project perspective, if you're going to do a fence, there's got to be some type of, you know, do profiling, figuring out what it's going to be, what's the project plan. Now, I happened to be at the school a couple weeks ago, and I was told that overnight, whoever is hired to the fencing came out, and they installed the fencing parameter, which actually blocks the food truck delivery and from the garbage bin being picked up. Now, if there's no communication to whoever the stakeholders are, i.e. the principal and whoever is at the school, to say, "Does this plan work for the school?", obviously it wasn't done. So to everyone's disappointment, they come in, and it's a disaster. So my question is, where's the communication, and there's a lack of transparency? Without transparency, there's no trust. You're leaving people, i.e. the parents, concerned parents, myself. And I just want to say, in the terms of transparency, I am the PTA president for the school, just to be clear. So I'm hearing these questions from the fellow parents at the school, saying, "What's going on with the playground?". Now, the fence, as I said, there seems to be a lack of plan, and to me, a lack of plan is a waste of money, because now whatever was done has to be taken apart or retrofitted to make it more accessible for both the teachers, the principal, and overall the safety of our kids. Now, regarding the playground, of course, it happens to me. My son went to school since September, and we were told back in June 21st when I came here that there would be transparency, there would be communication, and it would be taken care of over the summer. That was not done. Now, I do understand that things are prioritized based on whatever is going on, but that's where I said communication is the key. You leave people to make assumptions, which generally are not good assumptions. My son went to school, his shirt got ripped at the playground. Thank God, he's okay. That's the first thing I checked, did he get injured in his body? But this is his shirt. Now, we all know the economy, current state we're in, after replace a shirt. And it's not fair to parents. And this is not only just my kid, there are other parents with the same complaint. So my question is, when is the playground going to be addressed? I've sent pictures before, the playground, their peeling paint. It is, we all know what peeling paint means. There are pieces of metal that's sticking out, hence why the shirt is ripped. And as I said, it is okay. Now, moving on from that, because I was told that the playground should be replaced in November, so my question is, if it needs to be kept, as it was promised that it would be done by September, it wasn't, please let it get done by November. Kids, their safety is a big concern. Not only that, if there is an issue, communicate with us. That's all we're asking for, transparency. Let us know what's going on. We have a right to know. The next thing is the auditorium. Of course, I was there over the summer, well, in June, when they had a kindergarten graduation. A child's dress got ripped by the steer. Parent was high rate, and I understood, because very pretty dress. Now, the dress is ripped. The child, from what I observed, was okay, but again, her clothing got damaged. So imagine the possibilities of what else could go wrong. The auditorium, of course, the projector, whatever, the pull-down screen, it doesn't work. There's a lot to be done in that auditorium. I don't know if it's on any roadmap plan for the district to repair it, but something has to be done. I do happen to have two kids in two different schools. My son, my oldest son goes to Trapegen, that's my school zone, the younger one goes to Hamilton. I don't think the zip code should make a difference with what the opportunities that are offered to our kids. The auditorium, the playground, as I mentioned, it's a disaster, and it's not safe. That's the main important thing. Definitely not safe. The peeling paint, the mat, that mat is very old, and we know what the substance that's made of those old type of mat that is cancerous based on exposure. Now, moving on from there, I don't want to stress too much. The next thing is Infinite Campus. Now, my other issue is that I have been...
Okay.
Okay, thank you. With Infinite Campus, I noticed that I'm getting no notification from the school. Other parents are complaining. I approached the principal, and I said, "What's going on with Infinite Campus?". He mentioned to me not all the parent's contact is uploaded. What is the issue? Why is it taking this long for it to be uploaded? I'm familiar with software like that. It's a matter of uploading a spreadsheet. I don't know if there's a contact issue out there. Generally, programs like that give output of reporting. If there are failures for whoever parent or unsubscribe subscription, because you do have the chance to unsubscribe from getting those messages, whoever is monitoring it will be able to know. So there's notification process. I hope it's being utilized, but those things offer those kinds of services. Now, the middle school. I'm a big, well, selfish reasons, I was a big fan of the middle school being incorporated. My son is in the seventh grade at Trapegen. I didn't want him to move on to another school for the two years. I was like, "Oh, this is great." But now that I look at Hamilton, it's a small school. It doesn't work for them. The kids are exposed, the younger kids, with the older kids. It's not a great match. They're at different maturity level, and I've seen the issues and the benefits, the reasons why it shouldn't be done, far exceeds the benefit of having them there. And I'm not saying it doesn't work for all schools. I'm saying at Hamilton, what I've observed, it doesn't work, because the school is small, you can't separate those kids. They're much older, they're at a different maturity level, and it doesn't work for those seventh and eighth graders with those younger kids. The influence is horrible. And I've seen what it potentially can be the outcome. So if that should be reconsidered to say, probably it needs to be retrofitted based on the school and the size, I think that would be a great idea. And hopefully, as I said, there is opportunity for things to be done. I am a graduate of Mount Vernon High School, so I know what Mount Vernon can offer, but as it is right now, there's a lot of work needs to be done. Thank you.
Mr. Silver's going to address some of your issues.
I'm the person she spoke to. I spoke to Mrs. Alvaranga twice this afternoon. She referenced an email that came to me on September 7th, which didn't, and she acknowledged that it had never gotten to me, although there were phone calls which I missed. As I said to her this afternoon, we've signed a contract for $110,000 back in July to repair, replace the entire playground. Several board members were with me at that playground. They're aware of the difficulties, and I did speak with the playground company today. It's difficult, just like it's hard to get a car. It's hard to get parts and equipment for a playground. That playground will be installed before the end of November. I also pointed out that there's some $20 million in repairs that have been identified in that building, and one of those repairs is the auditorium, which is slated at about $1 million to repair. But there are things that are more important there, such as the roof. The roof is considered the main priority in that building, and it's about $2 million to replace that roof. As to the fencing, the fencing company did not follow the plan they were supposed to follow. Yes, everything was done wrong, and that is being corrected on Saturday. When it's done, there'll be 31 additional parking spaces after Saturday, when they finish this repair work. There's no cost to us because they made these mistakes in their original plan. They had the plan from the principal, and our board members were there. We did all the plans together, and they did not follow the plan, and so they're repairing it this Saturday. So that should take care of that. I think I answered everything on that.
Mr. Silver, shouldn't that playground be closed until the new playground is put in? I mean, because as we see, kids are getting their clothes ripped. I'm sure there has been some injuries. I don't know.
I'm not aware of that, but I will speak with the building principal tomorrow morning. We'll make a decision about that.
Thank you. Now, if you want to respond to that, the ground has been damaged, and I'm hoping it will be repaired, but you know, if you're doing it, you have to consider that as well. So I don't know how, in terms of, I get that there's parts that are available, but whatever can be done, because we were told summertime, it would have been taken care of.
So it was not parts, it's a complete replacement of everything in the playground. And we'll determine tomorrow with the principal whether it's safe enough for them to use in the interim with perhaps additional supervision.
Our next speaker, John Gallagher.
My name is John Gallagher. I haven't been here in a while, and I'm here because I'm concerned about the finances in the school district. During this last election, I supported three candidates that got on the board, thank goodness, and a couple of new ones have been appointed. The purpose of me being up here today is I represent a homeowners group, and one of the things we talked about, and by the way, if the head custodian is here, I ask him to turn up the air conditioner, because it's going to get a little hot here, because I'm going to be mentioning some things that are going to bother some people, and I won't use their names, but I am entitled to do that if I want to do that. With regards to the school budget, I was out there campaigning against it, not because it was a total increase, and I told people, I told people that it would be more than a half a percent because the assessed values in the city of Mount Vernon went down, and because homeowners, senior citizens, and whatnot would bear the brunt of the fact that the ceiling has come downward on the senior discount program to these people, the STAR program. But one of the other important facets of my campaign was to find out about a state audit. Now, I'm going to ask everyone that's sitting up there, any of the administrators here, is there a myth, or is it a fact? Was a state audit done? And if you do know about it, kindly raise your hands, because I haven't heard anything about the state audit being done. Now, I don't see anybody raising their hands. Now, I ask the question, and the reason why I'm asking for a state audit is, we want to know where our money's been going, because we live in a community where over 60% of the families that live in households in this community are at the poverty line or above it, and if money is not being spent correctly for our children, then something's really wrong here, okay? Children are the most important thing here, and it's the taxpayers, whether you own property, whether you pay sales tax, whether you pay state tax, that funds the school district. So my question is, with nobody raising their hand, there was a state audit done? There wasn't a state audit, and they don't know. And if you don't know about whether or not a state audit was done, I'd like to know why. The current superintendent met me outside of a meeting here, and I asked her about that state audit, and that was back in July, and I asked her, "What happened with the state audit?". And she said to me, "Mr. Gallagher, it's pretty concerning, it's pretty damning." And I looked at her, and I said to her, "Are you going to make it public?". And I haven't heard anything made public. I don't even know if any of you board members know, but you should be asking for it, because you represent the taxpayers of Mount Vernon, you represent the children of Mount Vernon, you resent... You resent their parents? No, no, I'm, I'm heated. I'm heated. And it's going to get hotter because I want to know where the money's been going. And the only way we're going to do it, and it's not by a state audit. I asked the three people that ran for school board, and I hope the other additional ones that were appointed, school board members who were appointed. We want a forensic audit. We want to know where the money's going, okay? And if it's not going to the children, I got a major concern. I sat across from Pennington, I live across from Pennington, and I saw money wasted on that school. Wasted. And I had to stop a, a couple of, of projects for Mr. Polici when he was here. And he looked at me like I was dumb, that he was dumbfounded. So you're not dumbfounded. Why are we putting this stuff in there? We don't need to do that. And you hear you talking about a Hamilton school with a fence. You're talking about roofs. We had a hundred and twenty million dollar bond. We had twenty million dollars a few years before that. Where is all this money gone? Why aren't our schools fixed? I, I don't understand it. But more importantly, how come our kids aren't getting educated? I hear all these applause, how come they're not being educated the way they should be? And I'm not even looking at the fact that, as I said before, they come from socio, socioeconomic problems. These kids should be educated. It's their way out of poverty. It's their way into learning how to become good citizens in the United States of America. And I'm asking this, and I want to know once again, if you, none of you, uh, board members have seen that state audit? If there is one, according to the superintendent, there's one, you should be demanding it. You are the board of directors. She is the CEO. You give her direction and you also give all her administrators direction by passing legislation. Do your job for the public. Please don't make me take legal action because we will. If you don't, we will. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Ms. Lyon. Greg Bonaparte.
Evening. I'm going to read this so I can follow a timeline. But, uh, good evening. Last year I spoke with, uh, Superintendent Dr. Hamilton. I sent letters, many letters to the board. And on many occasions, I came to meetings and spoke. I expressed my concern that the children in this district were not properly educated and that the buildings were dangerous. The special education department was and still is a disaster. Many in the community and in the district complained that special ed workers were being fired so that companies can be created at high fees to take their place. Many in the administration, last administration, if you can remember around this time last year, they all ran out the door. You can count them. They all went just because that allegation was made. The new superintendent on many occasions told me that the district was a mess. She told me that companies were paid that did not exist and contracts were awarded without board approval. She mentioned one company, but said there were many more. I asked her to reveal whose these companies were. In March, she told me to wait until after the election. After the election, she said she would reveal everything when the new board was installed in July. In July, she told me she cannot reveal anything because she ordered audits in all departments and they would be completed in August. It is now clear to me no audits were performed over the summer. On August 26th, I visited this building to meet with someone about my grandson. As I was leaving, I ran into the business manager. He said, Greg, Mr. Policio did some bad stuff. On the August 3rd board meeting, the same business manager pleaded with the board that emergency work had to be done at Trapegen. He hired the same company that the superintendent implicated. The fees were enormous. You need to look at them. The business manager said it was the work is done on an emergency basis, so there was no bidding process. Now I got calls from everyone, including, uh, the former board, uh, the former clerk in Mount Vernon, who said, that's illegal. So I looked it up. It's illegal. You have to have a bidding process, no matter what. So the business manager was lying. There are many people coming forward to say that a lot of people, past and present, benefited from companies off the backs of students and taxpayers. This is not about one person or one family. There must be a federal investigation to reveal the truth. This is bigger. The superintendent and the board and the business manager, you owe it to the students, the parents, and the taxpayers of this city to tell what you know. It is also your responsibility legally. Thank you.
Mark Stuckey.
Good evening, board members. Um, I want to touch something that was said, uh, from Innesville by a parent over Hamilton School. I was one of those who, um, did the walkthrough in the summertime with a couple of the board members and, um, Mr. Silver. And I talked to the lady who was in charge of the company, who was, uh, looking at the playgrounds. And as Mr. Silver said, it takes time in order for the parts to come because it's like buying a car nowadays. It's basically almost impossible because of the pandemic everybody's using as an excuse to get the parts to come in. And if I'm not mistaken, the, the lady said it's going to take about, uh, two to three months in order for the parts to get here. So those board members who was there wind up saying, with other places, other schools, right? Can we salvage some of the stuff that we have? And it was, yes, we can salvage. So what they're trying to do is get what's necessary for the, the main schools so they can fix those playgrounds. And what's left, what's being taken away from, from the schools that they're taking those pieces from is going to be salvaged to use in other school districts as such as a brace or a joint or the, the covering that's still good. So it's, it's going to take a minute to wind up having those things done. You know, the parts are coming from, uh, what was it, Texas or somewhere out, out there? And it's hard to get those parts because now what's happening, they're giving us a guarantee where the parts that, the playground parts that we had, you know, they had a limited warranty on the product. So I can honestly say, you know, um, Mark was there and, um, Ms. White, Ms. White was there and myself with Mr. Silver. You know, that they are working to trying to get the parts to put the playgrounds together for the young people. Because I wind up, you know, asking the questions. I wind up saying, you know, you know, how we can save money. And I believe with Mr. Silver and Mark and whatnot, because we was talking together, how we saved a lot of money on the playground over at Hamilton. Thousands of dollars were saved on something so simple. And with, you know, working as a team, the board, those who was there, we saw something that can be saved. The next thing is, board members, there's going to be a lot of allegations thrown at you. What you can, you are obligated to do and what you're supposed to do. And if there is an audit taking place, the audit takes place on every department that you're going through? And then after the audit, it have to wind up being put together? And it's going to take time. But until the time comes for the order to be given out to you, please, don't say nothing. Because then people going to take it out of proportion and throw it all over the place and you didn't point and do all this other stuff. And you know, it's going to start making us look bad all over again. There's a lot of this going around Mount Vernon. Okay? And like I said the last time, don't believe all you see and half of what you hear. You have an allegations on, on, that took place on the, on the, uh, news press out here on Friday, which doesn't hold no dead going weight. And the whole thing is, there's a resolution that's out here, but you know, there's a backside of it that is not open to the public. And that's the law. So they can't see certain documents. But yet, it's a lot of mouth movement. And what is happening is hurting us. You go over to Pelham, they have their issues, they have their problems. You go to New Rochelle, same thing. But Mount Vernon has a tendency of running off with the mouth and then hurting those who are trying to help us. Dr. B C inherit cancer. And those who like her is in three categories. Like, I'm slowly moving up to work with you. Then you got the haters. The haters are going to continue to throw mud on her. To say and make accusations that are not true because they don't care.
Mr. Stuckey, watch your time, please.
Yes, ma'am. One minute. So please, don't believe the accusations that are taking place. Okay? Because they're not true. Because there are certain people out here who are coming out, saying stuff because they want her out of here because she's helping the students and, and the taxpayers. So don't believe it.
And our last one, Bishop Edwards. Bishop Edwards? Oh.
I'm back again. But I'm back to, uh, first of all, tell the board that we support you. And that this is a tremendous job that you have to undertake. We also concerned about the image that is being projected in the broader community. It is not good for Mount Vernon when we air out our dirty laundry on Channel 12. This does not help us with the state, does not help us in securing grants. So that, and we can't stop people from doing what they choose to do. But those of us who remain quiet and don't speak out against it is guilty as those who are diminishing our community. I want to say to this board, you know that you have a fiduciary responsibility. And all we ask that you do that. We don't want you, we will not micromanage you. We feel that you're very competent. I don't buy into this idea that the intellectual reasoning of our community is low. We have some of the smartest, brightest people in our community. We just don't engage in minutia and nonsense. When we ask questions, they should be direct questions and not lead on questions with statements. So I've talked to the president, I talked to number you. The clergy feel good that you all are on the path of peeling back what need to be pulled back, looking at things. And we support that. We support. But also we want to say this, when you do your audit, we ask that you also be conscientious of the costs that will incur. That we ask that if we already have done an audit on previous years, it doesn't make sense to go back and do those years. There's two years that have not been done, that need to be done. If you have specific areas of concerns of departments that you need to audit, we have no problem with that. But having a broad stroke audit costing us hundreds of thousands of dollars don't make sense at all. And I know that you have a legal service. And most of the time they recommend their friends to do. We need to look at that. We need to make sure that whatever monies that we pay for services, that it does not affect the direct impact upon our children as we service them. We're with you. Dr. B, you have a hard job. And if this board were cohesive with Dr. B, who've been here since nineteen eighty-nine, a lot of you know where the dead bodies are. A lot of you know where they are. But I say to you, be careful what you resurrect. Because when you start resurrecting, all dead bodies may come up. So I'm here to say, thank you for your time. Thank you for your service. And, uh, we won't micromanage you. I won't come with no hammer and hit you on your head. I'll be malmannered as long as our children is benefiting and they are being educated. We are in an urban district, an urban center that is heavily trafficking in and out. We got socioeconomic issues that's far different than most towns and villages in Westchester. And yet we receive limited resources that does not match with the problem that we have. You have much to do with little. And thank God you're doing the best with what you have to work with. So get the audit done. Let the mouths and the naysayers be stopped. And let's move on. Let the district move on.
That ends communication from the public. Thank you. So we will go right on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. During the month of December, I will be hosting a state of the district. In the state of the district, I will be sharing with the community my slash our accomplishments over the first ninety days. Tonight, I will be giving you a snapshot of what that is going to look like. Before I start the video, I must welcome the scholars who are in our audience and who are here to showcase their masterpiece regarding mental health. I want you guys to applaud our scholars. Please stand. Okay, apparently it's a fine, fine choice for my scholars over here. They are the heartbeat of the night, but I get to them later. I must give my first thank you to the members of my cabinet, my esteemed cabinet, Mount Vernon Police Department, and to the Mount Vernon Fire Department. Because during my first ninety days, they hungered down with me to ensure that we have a smooth opening of our schools. The two outstanding barriers came from facilities, buildings and grounds, and special education. We are still fighting that battle. However, we will remain focused on the task at hand. And before I, um, put the video on, I just want to say that- I've been here for 21 years, going into 22 years. And I never complained about what need to be done. What I do though, is that I join forces with my team and we make sure that we, I mean, address every problems. Yes, July was very hard for me with what I discovered. Yes, that's true. But I've learned from very early, don't waste your energy on talking about the past when you have to focus on the future. I did not have time during the 90 days to even focus on that because my thought was about my students, how I'm going to get the schools ready. I didn't think about what I inherited, to be honest with you, because I have folks around me in the community and inside to address the issues. So I will continue to work. I will continue to do my best. And I'm going to ask the community to work with me, as you have been working with me and I'm talking to the community. You have been great, you have been good, and I appreciate you all the way because without your support, I would not be able to cover all these issues that we have going. And it's going to be much more. So thank you, thank you, thank you, community, thank you to the parents, thank you to the parent liaison, thank you to the principals, and thank you to the staff. You guys have been great and I'm going to continue to work with you as much as I can. Transparency, again, is my middle name, and I'm going to keep on saying that, but there's a time and place and a way to address issues. I do not address rumors. With that being said, I'm going to go to my children who wants to go home and do their homework because tonight is all about you. And it was always going to be about you. So I'm going to pivot to the mental health presentation. And this is going to be done by, still call her Senator, once a Senator, always a Senator, Ruth Hesse Thompson, Fernanda Cavalo, and our students. And thanks to the parent liaison who worked with this as well. And as you know, this project came from the Moving Forward Breakfast that we had at Friendship in May of last year. And this blossomed into five different groups of people. And we keep on meeting, I always said, for me is not one and done. And I continue to work with this community. And I also want to say to the community, I'm going to take my show on the road by having a superintendent advisory. And we are going to do roundtables and we can talk about the issues because I am really not an office person. That's why I have a pair of sneakers, I just need a hard hat, I mean a hat, that hard thing. Because I have never learned anything about facilities until the summer. I learned fast because we were on the verge, and you will see that some of our schools were possibly not going to be ready for September. But I have to get them ready. And that is why I thank the people in the community, the police department, the fire department, for coming to our rescue. So with that being said, I'm going to hand over to Senator Ruth Hesse Thompson and Frances Lycie and also Fernanda Cavalo and our kids to present this to you, because you're going to hear from some of our kids tonight. Because they are my pride and joy and this is who I've worked for for 21 years, going into 22 years. So guys, give them a round of applause. Mental health. We all know that mental health is real. And all these shootings that we have been experiencing and going on, mental health is real. And you can see it from the behavior of adults, that mental health is real. I hand over to you, Senator.
Dr. Bennet Conroy has put me on the spot, but you know, I come from a Baptist home that says be always ready, so. But we have been meeting as a community to talk about the fact that mental health is very real. And I look at the posters that our students have made and the idea that generated from those meetings to talk about the fact that it's okay not to be okay. And I know the people who look at it say, well, what does that mean? We've come through two and a half years of pandemic, which has isolated us not only as a community, but even as families. Many times, families have been kept distant from each other because they could not visit. And I don't think that until the pandemic occurred that any of us realized how significant family is or how important socialization of other human beings is until we have lost it. I know that for the first 180 days when the world was shut down, I did not leave my house. Many times, I did not go in my yard. My property is over a quarter of an acre. But I would not go outside of my house for fear. That's not an experience that I have ever known in my life. People who know me know that I'm afraid of very little to nothing. But this was something that instilled in me such a need to protect myself and to hold myself away from, even from my family members when they went out to the grocery store and I became an Amazon queen. I mean, next to the owner of Amazon, I probably own the both stock. Because it became very easy for me to do that. But in the process of doing it incrementally and exponentially, I isolated myself. That is not a healthy thing for human, for human behavior. The need for socialization, the need for that connection with each other is very critical. Multiply that by 50 and think of what our children experienced when they had to go back to school this year after being out for almost two years. Think what that meant to families who had children home every day. Underfoot, without the release of saying, six or eight hours a day, my kids are awake. Now every day for 24/7, they are underfoot. They're loud, they're noisy. They're letting off natural energies. They're experiencing life in a very different kind of way. And none of us can say that we handled it well. So think about what it meant to them to come back into this experience. I've talked with parents whose children kicked and screamed the first days that they had to go back into school. You know, since 1934, there have been hassled children in the public school system. Even today, there is still, that line is still in the public system. And my great nephew said to me, his daughter had a meltdown. She's always been a good student, loved school, couldn't wait to go to school in September, and was more than just outfits. Back to school, school supplies, bags. This year, she was terrified. How do you deal with that behavior very suddenly? Part of how you deal with it, accept the fact that that is a normal, that's our new norm. And that it's okay not to be okay. But it's not okay not to get help and support. And one of the things that we talked extensively about in this committee was how do we support our teachers who are experiencing that, but as adults are supposed to have a handle on it? But who says they're supposed to just because they're adults? And our children in an environment that may not be, that may be hostile under normal circumstances, superimpose the pandemic on top of that. But I say, as someone who started their career as a pediatric nurse and worked in the drug treatment and have done a variety, I've had five careers and God has blessed me to be Senator for 16 years and look at how do we ensure that we help people to understand that it is okay not to be okay, but that we have an obligation to ensure that we put the support systems in place in our schools particularly, in our communities especially, in our churches, definitely, to ensure that people feel safe in whatever environment they find themselves in. And that when they're having a meltdown or a bad day, that we accept that this is our new norm. But we've got the safeguards in place to ensure that they and we are protected in those moments. Thank you, Dr. B.C. for including me in this activity. I had no anticipation of what I wanted to say to you tonight, but as I look at our young people, please understand that there is no stigma to not being okay. And talk to somebody, find anybody that you feel comfortable with to say, today, I don't feel okay. But please make it okay that I do not. Thank you.
Good evening. So I do have something written because I want to make sure that all the points of these very important conversations that we've had with these action groups are covered. So thank you, Senator, I'm really lucky to work with her and Ms. Lycie and Ms. Peterson and all the other members that have been part of, thank you. Okay. So as a follow-up to our Moving Forward Together Breakfast, which took place in May, as Dr. B.C. mentioned, our district pledged to partner up with city, community agencies and members by creating these community action groups. Because post-pandemic and post very tragic accidents that have happened in our community, we learned that we cannot get over it on our own. We can't do this as a separate entity and we have to work together. So one of the groups is the Mental Health and Wellness Steering Committee. Some of our members who are present here today include school members, city officials, community agencies, members of religious institutions, business owners, sport coaches, students, families, and residents. One of the goals set by this committee is to create a community-wide awareness initiative that will help combat the mental health stigma that still does exist. As partners, we are renewing our commitment to ensure that we provide a healthy community where our students can learn, play, and reach their full potential. Our first step is to openly promote conversations about the importance of mental health and wellness within our city. As a symbol of our partnership and devotion to fighting the stigma on mental health, we have created lawn signs that will be distributed across our homes, the city, business, and schools. These lawn signs include a QR code which will lead to a community directory and communication plan to address mental health issues. These will include community agency resources, events happening in the community, available workshops and trainings for families, community members, staff, students, safe haven locations and points of access, not only for moments of crisis, but also healing circles or just as safe public spaces. So not only did we want to create this sign, we also wanted to incorporate the voices of our students because they're the reason why this group was put together in the first place. So I have some of them here who created these wonderful signs. I wasn't able to put all of them up, but we have about 50 of them that will also be distributed to businesses and schools. And I do want to invite some of them to speak about their own experience and what mental health means to them and what it was like making this project.
Hello, my name is Shane Curlew, I'm from Trapegan Elementary School and I'm in 7th grade. And here I'm today, today I'm here to talk to you about what mental health means to me and how it's okay not to be okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and kids. It's okay not to be okay because when you're not okay, you should stay calm and try to think happy thoughts to make yourself feel better. If that doesn't work, you can speak to a trusted adult or an adult you know that can help you feel better. And because they care, they'll try their best to help you feel as better as you can. And because sometimes adults are not okay for themselves, so they have the same experience as we do. And that, that definitely gives me comfort that it is okay not to be okay. I rest my case, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to say something? I told them that their presence is enough, but if they want to say something, they can absolutely say something.
Hi, my name is Chanelle from Grimes and I'm in 5th grade. Today I'm going to be talking about it's okay to not be okay. Because not all the times you might be happy, you might be sad or mad, but you can talk to an adult to situate things. And sometimes you have to try to think on a more positive side. Thank you.
Hello, everyone, my name is Elena Peter-Jokai, I'm 11th graders from Mount Vernon High School. This is my work. And I want to keep it short by saying that we repeat what we don't repair. So if you're feeling bad, just go talk to an adult or a friend or whoever you feel comfortable talking to, just don't keep it inside because that's not going to help.
Elena is also creating her own mental health committee at Mount Vernon High School. So we will be inviting them back to all of our activities.
Hi, my name is Rashanet and I'm in the 6th grade. It's okay to not be okay because you might have gotten it, gotten over it physically, but you haven't gotten over it mentally.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Manaya. And it's okay to not be okay because some days you'll feel like, oh, I'm okay, but then some days you won't. And it's just okay to feel like that. It's just not okay to not go to somebody and start going out on your feelings and say, I feel bad today. I feel bad today and I just want to talk to you about it.
Did I miss anyone? Okay, so I do want you guys to all stand up again, just for another round of applause for our artist. Thank you so much. So I do have the yard signs for all the board members tonight. Yes. And the rest of them will be distributed to some of the families by the parent liaisons who have been an amazing support during this initiative as well, as well as the staff who helped the students work on these projects. So they'll be distributing them to make sure that they're spread out evenly across the city.
Ms. Lycie, you have been a very integral part of this. Why don't you come up and say something? I know you retired, but still, you are very active in the school community, so. And I know this project is close to your heart. So could you?
Good evening, everyone. For many years, we've seen the adults suffer and as a result, the babies suffer. And eight years ago, when I retired, I started seeing the issues in kindergarten, first, and second grade most heavily. and second grade most heavily. So we have to look at our babies. We have to come together, really, we talk about it, but we have to be about it. We have to come together as a community. We have to offer safe places and safe havens. We have to convince our parents. I would have children there who needed psychiatric help and I would have to convince parents to allow me to get them the medical attention that they needed. We have to realize that if your child is bleeding and their arm is hanging off, it's just as dangerous as them having an emotional, mental issue and you not getting them medical attention. We're full human beings. We have an emotional side, a mental side, we have a physical side, and we must be wholly healthy in order to achieve. So talk to your neighbors, talk to your friends, offer suggestions because we have a community that deserves and should be healthy.
So that brings me to the conclusion of the mental health section of it. It's not over. We just began the campaign, so you're going to hear a lot from us. So thanks to the young folks who are here, and I know that, Arianna, that's your name, Elena, she's doing a big thing in the high school about mental health, and I wish other people would join her on this journey. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Before we end this section, I'm going to show you the video that I promised you of my 90 days. So just give me five minutes of your time just to go through the amount of things that we have accomplished so far. So with that being said, who is going to do the video? Dr. Gabitan?
Good evening, everyone. I am Dr. Weyland-Bennett Conroy, and I am incredibly honored and humbled to be chosen as the superintendent of the Mount Vernon City School District. The past 90 days of my administration flew by. However, much has been rectified and accomplished. In my role as superintendent, I want to ensure we focus on what matters most, cultivating the genius in every child by creating schools that are safe centers of learning with caring adults who engage students in rigorous, culturally responsive experiences that prepare them for the labor demands of the 21st century. My first goal is aimed at addressing student safety and social and emotional health. In renewing this commitment, I have hired K.H. Briga Security Services to provide a director of security and two field supervisors. They also provide temporary solutions for crossing guards near Mandela and Mount Vernon STEAM Academy until the city of Mount Vernon can hire additional crossing guards. We also improve safety infrastructure. We established fire watches at various schools to comply with fire safety concerns from the inspector. Seven of our schools were out of compliance and faced potential closures. Violations were corrected and the schools opened due to the first week of school. We also have installation of over 2 million in new security cameras in five schools, Mount Vernon High School, Parker, Williams, Trappagan, and Lincoln. And we also labeled all exit doors throughout the district and shared those floor plans with the Mount Vernon Police Department and the Mount Vernon Fire Department. We redesigned safety policies and procedures. Under that, we developed a district safety plan that was approved by the board and New York State Department. Enforcement of New York State data policies, district-wide data procedures, and created a new partnership with Bosse's to ensure our safety procedures and policies are compliant with state regulations and laws. Established safety interventions, bi-weekly safety and security meetings with Mount Vernon Police Department, Mount Vernon Fire Department, and the district safety team. Bi-monthly district-wide safety team meetings with building-level safety teams. We also prioritize students and staff's mental health. As a result of that, we hired a district mental health and wellness coordinator. We initiated the district-wide anti-bullying, expanded No Place for Hate program in all our schools. We celebrated Bullying Prevention Month. Enforcement of New York State data policies, established the district-wide data procedures. The second goal was to recommit to academic excellence for all scholars. To that aim, I have hired and reestablished the curriculum and instruction department. We hired an assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction and a director of humanities, K-12. We redesigned the curriculum and instruction. Under that, we have standard-aligned curriculum inclusive of social, emotional learning, and culturally responsive pedagogy. We implemented new foundational curriculum and training for K-2 students. We ensured the curriculum was accessible to all teachers through access Rubicon, and we also revised the APPR. We expanded the career technical education program. We have approval of the nursing pathway, established an auto-technology partnership with Ford Motors and Rockton Community College. Academic interventions and enrichment. We established a district-wide RTI team, implemented Mount Vernon REEDs, provided additional university pre-K 3 slots in partnership with our CBOs. We revamped academic power hour. We registered 75 students for college classes throughout this Smart Colors grant. And we also have three high schools were approved, the New York State Seal of Civic Readiness. My third goal is aimed at redesigning community and family engagement. I have launched the Parent Resource Center to support families and connect to resources. We conducted stakeholder listing tours to set expectation and garner their support. We hosted the Moving Forward Breakfast with religious, government officials, and community leaders to partner with the school district. We conducted monthly meetings with our five community action groups to continue our conversation and strategy sessions. We sponsor a fall festival for students and families to strengthen homeschool relationships and to encourage family and community engagement. We established Benjamin Turner as a community school that will collectively provide services to include dental hygienists, nurse, doctor, optician, and psychologist. And we also conducted a community review of the district-wide safety procedures to educate the community. My fourth goal is aimed at reimagining impossible possibilities for our students. I have fostered promoting from within, thus growing capacity of our existing staff. We hired two principals, assistant superintendent of administration, climate and culture, director of technology, director of humanities, director of special education, and a dignity, equity, and inclusion coordinator. We approved MVAG contracts. We conducted stakeholder meetings with various departments to boost morale, cultivating a climate of trust, transparency, and equity. Human Resources hosted a virtual job fair. I look forward to sharing in depth what we have done to ensure the Mount Vernon City School District is working for our children at the state of the district address.
Thank you so much to have to suffer through that. But I promise that when it comes to the state of the district, everybody will have a part in it and it will be different. So it gives me time to sit down. But I also want to address another issue here, and I'm going to close. I know this is long. A couple weeks ago, there was an incident in Osney with our football players in which racial slurs were aimed at them and bottles were thrown at them. However, I called the other superintendent and we worked on it very well, and we get to find out that the bottle that was thrown was somebody threw a bottle of Gatorade to his son, but the racial slur was said by one of the students in that school. So what we did, we jumped in it because we don't tolerate that kind of behavior. I did what is necessary and what had to be done. I, I must say that the other superintendent was great, but not happy with the length that I took it to. But my whole intention is to protect Mount Vernon City School District kids. So I have to do what I have to do. So I just want to make the public know that we will not tolerate those kind of behavior and call out any racist behavior made by anyone at all, whether it's within our walls or outside of our walls. We will not tolerate that. And I know at this point in time, our players are at a happy place. On Saturday morning, we met. I gave them a breakfast. The parent liaisons were out there and so much, a lot of my community members and trustees. Thank you, trustee Gale. You were so very important in that aspect of it, knowing that you're an athlete. And the young men were very receptive. They talked about how they felt about it. And again, as it said, it's okay to be not okay. So we gave them a forum in which they could express themselves and they were good about it. So I just want to let people know because I know that is going around and people have been asking what happened. So that is what happened. I also want to thank the, the, the community that came out to Graham. We had a fall festival at Graham for the first time, and I have to say that I have to thank the parent liaison. We got like around 500 to 600 RSVP, but in actuality, we have over 2,000 people who came out. And they were dancing in the street, they were eating, and we thanked the vendors and we thanked the students from STEAM who came to do the face painting. And we also thanked the teachers from, from Graham and from other schools. The staff was good. And I want to thank the custodians and the lunch monitors and everybody who was there. But I'm going to end by saying this. I went to the face painting area to get my face painted. The lines were long because they were the students from STEAM. They always do that. And thank you, Principal Morales. And as I stood beside one student, she said to me, because I was talking to one of the, the seniors, she said to me, "Superintendent, I've been waiting for a long time." I mean, maybe a third or fourth grader. So I said to her, "Really?" She said, "Yes." And I want to go to the bouncy house. So I said, "Okay." So I said, "Why you, why you said that?" She said, "Because I don't want you to cut in front of me." So I said, "You don't love your superintendent that much that you would allow her to go in front of you?" She said, "Yeah, but I have to go to the bouncy house, not this time." So I'm just saying, and, and I just watched her, what she chose, she chose two things for her face. I said, "Can you tell me why you chose those two things?" She said, "One was a crown and one was a butterfly." And she said to me, "One day, my father said to me, 'You are my queen.'" So she has to choose the crown. And the butterfly, she said, "I just love nature. I just love butterflies." And I let her be, but she can be more than a third or a fourth grader. But she was going to make me understand, "You're not cutting in front of me today." And, and I respect that. I wasn't going to cut in front of her though, but at least these are the things that make, bring smiles to your face when your kids feel comfortable to react with you that way. You know, I mean, they wrapped me up as a mommy and it was a fourth grader who was wrapping me up as a mommy. I won the competition anyway. Thank you, fourth graders, whoever you are. But at the same time, these are the things that you have to do with your children to make it feel natural. And I don't, I don't fake those things. Many of you who have been here for 21 years, I don't, I don't, I don't fake stuff. That's just me. But I want to thank the community for coming out, thank the community for those conversations they've had with me. I stayed all day. I said I was going to spend an hour, but I ended up staying all day, all day. So I want to thank the community for coming out and to let them know that we are going to have a lot of this coming their way. And with that said, that's the end of the superintendent report.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Dr. B.C. Thank you, Dr. B.C. So we'll go into committee reports right now? Trustee Lindsay? Well, let me go to trustee, trustee Adams. Do you have a report to give?
Oh, I have a report.
Okay. Just one, I didn't want to, I didn't want to go over you. B.C., you know how to clear a room out? Okay. Okay. Trustee Lindsay?
All right. Well, the security meeting, actually, we had a security meeting last Monday, met with the rest of the committee. We discussed the district's interaction with the city emergency service. We set up some future dates for our meetings. I once again brought up the idea that the city or whoever is in charge of the memorial field should consider installing a repeater for our security personnel for their radios for in the future when we're down there so our radios can communicate outside of memorial field. They work inside, but it's kind of a hole and could use being able to reach people outside in case there's an emergency. That was that meeting. We set up our dates for the future. I've also had a couple of meetings with Mr. Fagan and his road supervisors just to go over a couple of things that he had brought up and a couple of things that were brought up by the community and just make sure everything was squared away.
Thank you, trustee Lindsay. I just wanted to follow up. Is the city still supply, are we still supplying crossing guards at the STEAM Academy?
Yes.
Okay.
I do. Would you like the facilities?
Yes.
Okay. We had a meeting last week, last Thursday. The security committee was there. We discussed the various issues. There's some structural issues in different schools. We discussed the audit of the facilities, the fire alarms. Another issue is the elevator that they're in the process of trying to get done at Williams. We discussed the playground repairs that were brought up earlier and set up our next meeting. I also met with, sorry, I also met with Mr. Silver today, and he had introduced, he introduced me to a couple of our consultants who are working on different projects within the district. So that's pretty much my report or the facilities report for this meeting.
Trustee Kelly, do you have anything to report? I thought you had, I thought you were, you know, talking to someone at Scarsdale High School.
I was at the meeting, but I am not the chairperson of that committee. I don't, okay. Until given, I just got my appointment. So as soon as I, I, I am official, I will act, will definitely report.
Okay. Trustee White, anything from you?
No, Mark, I wasn't able to attend that facility. Mark handled it.
Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Trustee Gale, anything?
Yes. Excuse me. As, as part of the family and community engagement, I missed the silver and I met with the We Future Cycle CEO. There was a community person who mentioned recycling in the schools, who mentioned cycling, recycling in the schools. And we invited the person from We's Future Cycle and Mr. Silver and I met with her on a Zoom meeting. We'll be inviting her to a future meeting so she can discuss the program and looking to restart recycling in the Mount Vernon School District.
I think I have glorious, you have your names twisted around. Okay. Elena, anything from you?
Today, I visited Pennington School and I just want Uh, today I visited Pennington School and I just wanted to thank Principal Henderson. She was very accommodating. The children are wonderful. There are some things that need to be fixed and definitely taken care of, but it was a good day.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Abisolbi?
Um, the only thing I have to report is I did attend the meeting with our president and, yeah, Helena, especially at department. And we had a great turnout for parents who came and they were really involved. And so looking forward to them coming back out on November 10th.
November 10th.
Yeah.
At Benjamin Turner.
Benjamin Turner.
For the, for the SEPTA meeting, special at PTA.
I'll let you finish it.
No, 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 no. No, go ahead.
So we're trying to encourage our parents to attend that meeting. Okay, that's November 10th. So we need everybody to kind of spread that word for us so that we can get that committee working and moving in the right direction. So thank you for, for that.
Trustee Corin.
Good evening. So the budget committee met. We have a full committee now. We have one returning member of the community, Mr. Keller, Tom Keller, and another community member join, Derek Clay. And also we have trustee Gale, who is on the committee, and of course, Mr. Silver. So during our meeting, it was held October 19, we discussed the conditions of our buildings, all our emergency capital projects that we have to, I guess, do them in tiers, tier one, tier two. We discussed that with schools are in dire need as far as capital projects. We also discussed the ESSA and the OP grant that was given to Mount Vernon School District for school year 2021, 2022. That was in amount of 30 million. And so far, the school district spent 2.8 million. And it's, it's, we do have the breakdown of all that was spent. It was for playground, park, face mask, bus and transportation. I mean, we, I did ask for, you, anybody know me? I, I asked for itemized breakdown of the spending of the 2.8 million. So we discussed that. Our next meeting will be November 9th and we will definitely go over the budget in more details on that November night meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Corin. But we also had another special ed meeting yesterday with, with trustee Abisolbi and trustee Helene. And we spoke to, with Dr. Doggett and Ms. Jones regarding what we're going to do to bring our special, and, and Dr. Kim Smith, to bring our special education department in compliance. So we have a spreadsheet and we're going to work on knocking some things, some items down to, to get that off our new special ed director's list. Okay? Because we're a team here, right? So, and then we had our, I think it was last Thursday, Ford came in and we had a, a very good rally with the Ford people. And I, I took it upon myself to call the guy from Rockland Community College to talk to him about what else he can help Mount Vernon, the new Mount Vernon High School do. And so he's going to come in on November, I think it's November 16th? November 16th at 9:30 to meet with the team, the CTE team, Noel and Gloria and Helene, right? To discuss things on nursing.
Culinary.
Culinary and cybersecurity.
Cybersecurity, yeah.
So we're excited about that. I think that's all I have for committee reports. Excuse me.
One more. I, I almost forgot, but we did have a family and community engagement meeting with Dr. Carnroy chaired. And we're going to be meeting further to discuss more things that we'll be doing in the community. I see a couple of the members, members here. Just want to say thank you for, it was a good meeting and we're going to be giving you more information as we go along. Thank you.
So we also have been talking to a lady from Scarsdale High School about working with Iona and doing some projects with them. And I think we're going to, I think Gloria and Kelly are on that team. And I think they're going to schedule another meeting with the staff that you spoke to before. So look forward to another email on that. Okay? So that's all I have for committee reports. So we'll go right on to our resolutions.
No old business?
Is there any old business? Any follow-up? Anyone? Nothing? Okay.
We have some new people after we vote.
Okay. Okay. On our resolutions, can I have a motion, 5.1, authorization to approve director of security and security supervisor? Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion, 6.1, human resources, number 69A. Motion. All right, I need one more.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Have a motion for approval of human resources, 62, 6.2, approval of human resources resolution, non-certified?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Curriculum instruction, 7.1, have a motion for authorization to revise mentors in their Mount Vernon City School District mentor program for new teachers. Motion. Second. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 7.2, authorization to replace PBIS school planning team members? Motion.
Motion.
This is 7.2. 7. Okay. I need another motion. Second.
I made the motion.
All those seconded. Yeah. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion, 7.3, authorization to sign memorandum of understanding with Girls Inc. of Westchester County Programming. Motion.
Second.
B.C., can you explain what this is?
Girls Inc. is just like MBK, which is only for girls. And I know that they were in Benjamin Turner for many years and they're still there. So now they've broadened it to the high school. And just like how MBK will come in and work with the, with the young men, Girls Inc. will come in and work with the girls. And I think it's mainly sponsored by TD Bank. We had it at one point in time. So that's who that is.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion, 7.4, authorization to sign a letter of agreement with Concordia Conservatory? That's what I meant to say. What is that? Oh, that's what my question.
Motion.
Motion, second. Yeah, that's the one I had a question about.
Concordia?
Questions, concerns, discussion?
Question. Okay. So this program is a program that is in the Concordia Conservatory. It's the music side of it. And I know the principal is part of that, yes, is part of that team. And they want to come into that school to like teach our kids like music and all of that stuff. So I think, and, and since we want to kind of branch out with the music and arts in the district, and this is what I, I have to discuss with the, with the board as how we're going to approach this, to make it district, to make it district-wide and not just one school have music and stuff. Where we're not, all the, the schools can feed into, to that one school if we want, but we need to give the other school the opportunity to enjoy music and enjoy art. It's on a small scale, but we need it to be on a bigger scale. And since this is not really costing us anything, you know?
Right. I have a question about it. The hours that it's, it meets, one of them says 1:30 to 2:00 PM. Is that during the school day? And 2:00 to 2:30 PM?
Right. Because, right. Because I think what happened, she's not going to offer it to everybody. She's going to offer it to like the eighth graders, like the seventh and eighth.
So it's almost like a pushing in lieu of what the curriculum hours are? So, okay. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 8.1, school improvement, authorization to approve school improvement service memorandum, number S-23-7, dated October 25, 2022. Motion. What is it? Is that that? Hmm? It's for the catapult learning? Catapult learning? Yeah. Can you explain that?
Well, catapult learning is for Lady of Victory. They use their tax one money to hire whosoever they want in their building. So we have no control over that. But because the money is through our school district, as a public school district, we have to pay the bills, but they choose who they want.
So the board has oversight on this program or not?
No, we don't have anything to do with it. We just have to.
Just the money passes to them.
Yes, because that's your title one money.
Okay.
Dr. B.C., I have a question. Didn't we approve this?
It's another program. It's two programs she has.
Oh, okay. Okay.
I said the same thing to you when it came across my desk.
All those in favor? So this is, okay, so that's the, that's all catapult, that one resolution?
Yeah.
So this is the second program?
Yes.
So S-23-7 is a different resolution, isn't it?
Where are you?
S-23-7?
8.1.
Yeah, 8.1.
It's 8.1, yeah.
Okay. All right. So there's two resolutions, right? There's catapult, then there's school improvement resolution. This one? The next? There's a second one in there. There's two, right?
Right. She hasn't turned to, she hasn't gone to this.
There's a six as well.
Okay. All right. All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Authoriz, 8.2, authorization to approve school improvement personnel memorandum, P, number P-23-7, dated October 25. See, you have, is that same resolution, 8.1 and 8.2? Is that the same resolution or is my machine not?
What, what 8.2? Is it going to have?
8.2 is for.
Is it the same thing?
This is the title one. No, it's not the same.
Although, no, 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 it's not the same. This is for the title one coordinators that we have in the district.
For the different, the different schools.
Yes.
Wait, need a motion? Motion.
And that's more or less as a mandate. You have to have that.
I have two motions. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 8.3, authorization to approve school improvement service memorandum, S-23-6, dated October 11. Motion. Need one more? Second. Questions, concerns, discussions? So this is one that we proved last week, this REACH. This one has.
No, it shouldn't have REACH.
It's a smile dental. This is a smile dental.
No, but REACH is in there as well.
Which is in here. No, REACH cannot be in there.
It's down the, it's right, it's down the bottom under S-23-6.
Yes, REACH is not supposed to be there.
It's in October 11.
Go to the, second to the bottom, right here. Right here. And it's got a mix of, it has a mix of everything in the one resolution, which that should be lined out.
Oh, yeah. It's in there.
Anyway, it's not supposed to be there.
Can we, can we, that be removed?
I don't know how Rita put it in there.
We're supposed to table this?
Yes.
We need to table this.
Well, let's defer to council to see how we pull this out and vote on it.
Who is it?
So we have, we have a resolution that's blocked in with a bunch of them. How do we pull it out? I know Gus was here last week.
That one right now.
We want to pull one of them out.
You want to pull one out and not vote on it or?
Right.
We want to table it.
Table it.
Make a motion to remove it from the agenda. Okay.
Only one?
Right, we're going to pull it out.
Three actions, right? Tom, they're going to vote on one. But apparently Ms. James put all, lumped all of them in there and we only want to vote on one.
We, we want to vote on the smile and not the?
Smile dental.
Yes.
We want to vote on that.
That's the only one. It's all in, there's a mix. It's, there's, there's another program in there that should not be in there.
There's actually two programs.
Yes.
Make a motion to amend the resolution.
Okay, I'm making a motion to amend the resolution to remove?
REACH and catapult.
Okay.
We're, we're removing REACH.
Can we vote on it tonight?
I talked about it.
I said that, okay. And catapult.
Cat, catapult is in the pre, prior, prior resolution and it's in this one as well. So we already voted on catapult.
So this shouldn't be here, right? So to remove catapult and REACH from this resolution.
Right. So then what you do, you make a motion to amend the resolution. You have to vote on the resolution to amend the resolution and then you have to vote to approve the new resolution as amended.
Okay.
Would you like me to run that?
Can I have a motion to amend the resolution, 8.3?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. And that was, can I have a motion to vote on the new resolution, 8.3?
Motion.
Does it only include? 8.3 with the.
Resolution by the resolution.
Can I have a motion to vote on authorization to approve school improvement service memorandum? We move in REACH and CATAPUL. Only approving SMILE. Motion?
Motion.
Is that sufficient, Tom?
All the questions, concerns, discuss, questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. You have a motion, Student Services, 9.1, approval. 9.1, approval of Student Services Memorandum O7, dated October 25, 2022. Second. Motion?
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
I have one question on item number, item number four.
Item number four, it says the behavioral authorization to enter an agreement with All Points License Behavior Analysis. I don't, don't we have a psychologist that can establish the, to do behavioral analysis on some of the students? How many students do we have in each classroom?
Okay, so All Points.
Okay, so All Points.
You know, how many, how many, so we have, how many consultant services are provided to teachers daily, monthly, and weekly? So how many students do we, are we servicing? Do we need to go out and, don't we have psychologists to do this?
So All Points, you might recall during our autism presentation, they presented their program. They're certified in ABA. Our psychologists don't have that certification. But, I mean, they work with students and their behavior. All Points, for the most part, they service several buildings 10 days every month.
So are we keeping track of their time and how many students they're servicing and things like that?
We have a schedule, yes. So, for example, they go to Trapegen, Pennington. They go to Rebecca Turner, Grimes. They work, for the most part, with our cohort students.
So are they required to sign in and sign out when they go into the buildings and observe or do whatever they need to do?
Everyone signs in the building. If you want a special signature for them, we could do that as well.
Just for, just for accountability, I think we should, yeah.
Okay. Excuse me. Dr. Doggett is reminding me that they write daily reports. When he was a principal, they entered his building as well, so there's accountability for their service.
So who's overseeing that now? Who's overseeing that? Is it the principal because they were in your building or?
Yeah, supervisor. Dr. Corpus. Dr. Corpus works with All Points.
So she has all records of all this, all of them that's come in and?
Yes, she does.
So can we get her sign in and out for them?
Yes, we can.
Okay. All those in favor? Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. We have a motion for 9.2 Authorization to Appeal of any and all portions of the decision of the impartial hearing officer in IHRS case number 584428 and number 584429. Motion.
Okay, so I guess.
I was looking for the executive content on that or something to give me a clue, and I couldn't find anything.
Me either.
Came from the lawyers. Tom, you want to explain that?
I don't know if we can.
Motion.
Okay, okay, all right. So we go in executive session.
All right. Thank you, Tom.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
To? To two answers.
Are we going to do it now? We're not going to do it now.
We don't know what it is.
We have to pull it and then talk about it in the executive session and then bring it back if we want to.
Okay.
So, so motion, then a motion to, to pull this.
Motion to table it till we talk about it in executive session?
Okay.
So we have a motion for that?
Yeah. We do. I have a motion. Time two. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay, motion carries. Can I have a motion for 9.3 Appointment of Impartial Hearing Officer? Case number 586031.
Motion.
I need another.
Need another one?
I can second it, but I can same thing.
This is the same thing. It's the same thing as 9.2.
No, no, we're appointing, we're appointing a hearing officer. Okay, so you want to pull this?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna, I'm sorry.
It's okay. So, motion to pull 9.3 Appointment of Impartial Hearing Officer, case number 586031. We'll have to executive session. Motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for Business Office 10.1? Approve General Funds Transfers 2022-2023, October 25, 2022. Motion.
Motion.
Need another one?
Second. Mr. Silver can talk about it, yeah.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Yeah, he, well, we just opened up the floor.
So, we have a number of budget transfers for your consideration tonight. The, the first page where you have the yellow lines is just a summary page, and I'm going to be looking down at the pages below it, each of which speaks specifically to a transfer. So the first one is for $100,000 that the district is subsidizing the cost of bus passes for this community. I think there was, was a wonderful idea by the superintendent to do that, and it's just a great, great help to the, to the families in the community, and this is paying for half of the bus passes for the year for everybody who needs it. The second one, the second one is for, to continue our fire repairs. This is for the emergency repairs that we're doing for all the schools. So this is just for fire alarm repairs, light repairs. It covers the gamut of things. The third one is fire safety cabinets. Right now, we do not have the ability to store gasoline in a school building. It's illegal. But these fire safety cabinets, which we are, want to get for every building, we will be able to store small amounts of gasoline, and therefore, we won't have to worry about emptying out snow blowers, moving snow blowers from one building to another during different parts of the year. We can legally keep it in the building and keep that equipment in the building and not move it around. It's permitted by the fire department, and we want to get one of those for each school so that their equipment can just be kept right there and be safer. The next one is for, also for contracted services. It's just for repairs, fire repairs, air condition, no, it's not air conditioning. It's just fire repairs. And we have these in separate parts because there's, for specific items along the way. The last one is electrical, not the last one, the, that's for electrical pairs, $250,000. We had to replace or repair almost all the emergency exit lights in the buildings, and our state fire inspector was very, very pleased, particularly with Columbus School today, that we finally finished that school and made that a lot, a lot safer. The next one is for uniforms, shoes, and equipment. We have 125 custodial staff, and we're required by contract to purchase a pair of safety shoes for each of them every year. This also includes the purchase of snow blowers, shovels, other equipment, plus uniforms. There's been a lot of talk about having everybody dress better who works for us. You know the difference we've made in this, in the security staff with their new uniforms. We're trying to do the same for the custodial staff, so everybody looks like they really work here and they're not just, just dressed however they want to be dressed. And the last one is having to do with the, this bigger staff lawsuit, lawsuit called Maestro. This has to do with school funding for school districts that are underprivileged, and we have been involved in this for many years. We believe a conclusion of this is going to happen very soon, and we are hoping to have a very good result from these efforts. We're a part of a number of school districts doing these, this lawsuit.
The Big Five.
So we're like a separate member of the Big Five school districts. We're not one of the Big Five, but we're an associate member of the Big Five group, and as such are participating in this. Not all of the school districts our size are participating in it, but we certainly are, and we expect a good outcome from this. So that's the transfers.
Mr. Silver? Mr. Silver, I wanted to know about the bus passes. Are those also just for special ed or is that after school?
So our, our special ed kids are transported separately. Every, every special ed child gets door-to-door transportation, whether it's within the school district or whether they're going as far away as 30 or 40 miles. So that's separate. This is for any, this is for public transportation. This is not for the special ed, it could be for anybody who needs transportation to get from one part of town to another, and we're subsidizing that.
And that includes the after-school programs, like they get bus passes, so if the parents can't transport them back and forth?
That, that's correct. And so this, this pays for half of all the costs of the bus passes and allows the kids, particularly in the bad weather, a much easier way to get home. Some of them will live several miles from school.
They're mostly high school, the high school.
I, I just want to make a correction. If somebody wants to do after-school program, they don't come and get a bus pass. You have to be, in the day, you get that bus pass, and if you want to stay over until, to do an after-school program, that's how you get it. I just want to make that clear. But special ed is totally different.
No, no, the reason I'm asking, I know that there are a number of after-school programs, so I'm trying to figure out if the kids have the ability to leave, if they stay for an after-school program, if they have a bus pass that then takes them home for those students who want to participate, whoever it may be.
Is that it? Mr. Silver, you finished?
Yes.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 10.2 Authorization to Award Bid Number 22-2303 Landscaping the Picture Perfect Land Service, Inc.? Motion. Second, any?
Second, I'm sorry.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
So, Mr. Silver, I, I, I think I had questions. You may have answered my questions as to why we need a landscaping company at this juncture of the year, and you said they were going to do the sprinklers, right?
So right now, the only project they have is to, is to blow out the sprinklers in the five schools that, that do have the sprinklers. This is all by hour, hourly, and they do nothing else until the spring. And so we're just getting them on board now. We do not have the capacity to take care of the sprinkler systems ourselves. That needs to be done by an outside company. So there were three bidders for this, and this bid, I think this is the third or fourth time we've done the bid to try to get people to actually bid to do this work for us. We originally had it attached to doing snow plowing as well. This company used to do that as well. And now nobody, nobody's interested in bidding to help us with snow plowing. If we should have a really bad winter, that type of company stepped in to assist us also on an hourly basis. But there was no, there was no, they provide certain number of plows or man or anything like that to do the work. It was all when we needed it during really bad winters. So now we do not have that right now. We just have this company, one of the three bidders. They were clearly the successful bidder and have worked with us in the past, and we've seen the beautiful work that they've done here at the Board of Education in, in taking care of the landscaping in front and back of this building.
So how many buildings have sprinklers?
There are five buildings that have sprinklers.
All right, and then you're going to monitor the time, right?
Yes, they have, they have to provide, they have to provide labor reports before we pay anybody, as well as the, they're, they are supervised by our ground, ground staff.
All right, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 10.3 Authorization to Accept a Donation from Graduation Source from Mount Vernon High School?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 10.1 Authorization to Extend EnviroScience Consultants to Support Facilities?
Motion.
10.4. Oh, 10.10.4. Authorization to Extend EnviroScience Consultants to Support Facilities. Questions, concerns, discussions? All those.
Mr. Silver, you want to talk about the Enviro?
Sure. So we have struggled in the facilities department to add additional help on administrative level and with the, with the problems with the fire systems and all of what we needed to do to get our certificates of occupancy, and with the, the assistance of the state fire inspector and with the help of BOCs, we were able to locate this company. We've spoken about this at the last meeting when we first approved them, but it was a short-term approval, and now we're asking to extend this through December 31. There are some other parts to this which, that, we've asked to extend them till December 31. And so we have one person five days a week, and right now, another person two days a week helping us. And they switch off, and they work together, and they are just all over the place. They were instrumental in getting some of the work done for the Fire and Police Department for the numbering of the windows in the buildings and the exits and getting those plans together. And they have helped, helped the superintendent and me to get a number of things done. They've helped us to, with our fire inspections, and there's a list attached there of, to that resolution of their activities since they've started, but there's really much more. There's, they're just everywhere helping us while our facilities director is concentrating on certain other things. And so they're also helping with supervising some of the staff. So we're, we're asking that you approve this till December 31. We'll, we'll reevaluate this next month and see what we, what we need to do.
So were they from BOCs? Where'd they come from?
So, BOCs recommended them. The BOCs superintendent asked his facilities director to help us. He was here with us, with the fire inspector. The BOCs people recommended this company, said we can make a deal through BOCs to do this, and you would just pay BOCs. Then they did, and the company was very happy to do that. And BOCs then in the end said, we will, we cannot have this be a cooperative service through BOCs. And so we, we had to go on our own to, to accomplish this. And so it came from BOCs. The name of the company came from BOCs. They also do other things like environmental testing, although we have somebody to do that. They do a lot of safety stuff, so, but they provide retired facilities directors to public school districts. And so one of these people grew up here and just retired from Newburgh Schools, but he went to the Mount Vernon Schools. And another one retired from the Dobbs Ferry Schools, and another one, we've had some people move around. Another one came from Greenberg Central Schools. So these people know Westchester, know our facilities, and know all of the people that we deal with on the outside.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 10.5 Authorization to Approve the Pre-K Designations?
Motion.
Who's that?
Second.
Pleasure.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
So we have a, I guess you guys sent a rubric of how these facilities came about, right?
For the pre-K?
For the pre-K, yeah.
Dr. Gaylord Wallace, you want to come and explain the process?
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, community members. It is our honor to revitalize and resuscitate the Universal Pre-K Program in the city of Mount Vernon. And just as our superintendent says, we are going to do our due diligence, and that is what we did. We went through all channels to put out a request for proposal that was publicly placed in the newspaper for three weeks. We then received all requests for proposal. They were opened with a witness. They were logged in. And then a committee was formed to review all requests for proposals. We received a number of requests. They were read through with the exception of those that were received after the deadline. The team convened with copies of all of the requests for proposal, and they were scored individually with no discussion. Based on the RFPs that were submitted, we awarded our seats for the Universal Pre-K Program. As a result, we have notified all students who were chosen by the lottery to begin the registration process. We have begun to support them in the registration process in person, so both Sheena and I. So Bo Sheena and I are working in the evenings to get students, parents ready and registered. And we've also provided a survey to get a handle on what type of program each parent or family is looking for. And that is where we are right now. Our goal is to begin formally full day November 28th. There will be a plan of entrance for all students from each community-based organizations that will be submitted to me. I will review it. I will also complete a walkthrough of all spaces to ensure that it is up to my meticulous standard of excellence. And we will then begin the process of intake at the community-based organization. So the first step is for them to register with the district. The second step will then for me to create the classes for the community-based organizations and then they will implement the system for uniforms or school supplies and the times of the days and then we will begin a phase in of half-days to get the students ready for the full-day experience. And we are so excited. Thank you, everyone, for your support. More to come and you know, the website will be flooded with pictures and we will be excited to begin.
Thank you, Dr. Gail White-Wallace.
You are very welcome. Special thank you to the business office and everyone who took the time to review and score and a special thank you to Dr. B.C. who believed in bringing back this program for our smallest but most important learners. So thank you all again.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries.
I'd like to take this time to welcome the new employees that we just-
Hired, yeah.
The new employees we just hired.
Can't hear you.
You heard me. Okay. I want to congratulate the new employees we just voted on, so I know I met one of them.
Yes, can you please stand, any new hire in the audience? Please stand.
Would you like to speak?
Mr. Elvaro, you want?
First, I'd like to thank the board. I'm amazed, I'm impressed, and I'm excited. And Dr. B., I can call you Dr. B.C. now. And to the community, I'm going to work very hard, really hard. I am a, I, I don't stay in the office either, so I will be visiting, doing a lot of walkthroughs and I really want to get to know the community. I think it's beautiful here. I am from Long Island, very different, I don't know how many of you are from Long Island. Yep, so we have a lot in common because, you know, where I came from, it's not so different here. We're overly the same. I think it's a matter of keeping an open mind, communication, being a good listener and really just listening, because remember, I, just so you know, I was a PTA parent for 25 years. I don't look that old, but I'm not that old. Have two students, one is on his way out of college, I have a daughter who's graduated already with her masters, she's in the same field, I'm in more mental health. And I applaud the students who did this amazing job with the mental health. I am a big believer in mental health. We all know that it is something that we truly must engage in every single day with adults, with children, with parents. I believe that the parents are most important, you know, we need them. So our parents are key to success and the partnership doesn't happen without parents. Like I said, I was a PTA parent for many, many years, so I do relate with that and I think it's important, it's a full circle, it's a village. So I don't want to keep talking. As you can see, I like to talk. I'm here and I can't wait to come aboard and really begin the work that needs to be done. And you know, serious note, special ed, I've been in special educator for over 31 years. It is my passion. I love working with our students with disabilities. I have a brother who is also, a twin brother, I'm a twin. My brother has a learning disability and I think that's what got me involved. So I'm excited, I really am, and I want to thank you for everything. This was great. Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Can I have a, can I have a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of pending litigation and advice from counsel? Motion?
Motion. Second.
Yes, well, how long?
We have to vote on those two regulations before. You can, you can open the door and exec-
For others if you want to come back with somebody to aid.
All those in favor for executive session? Okay. Oppose? Abstain? No one? Okay.
I never do, but I get an ax.
So I think you'll, you'll probably be here about two, two hours.
We can't let them wait, so we can't.
We could do that. We'll vote on, we'll, we'll discuss what the legal issues that Tom has and we'll vote.
Okay. So we're not going to come back? No, we're not coming back.
Open the door.
Hi, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Whenever.